This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, and I call the regular council meeting of March 18th, 2024 to.
Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Kane?
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Here.
Mayor Protem Noak?
Here.
And Councilmember Walchek?
Here. Please rise for the lodge.
The United States of America.
And two republics for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible.
The liberty and justice for all.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
The moved.
I'll second.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Noak?
Yes.
And Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And do we have any modifications?
Yes, Mrs. Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of modifications to the agenda. Under B in the consent agenda, I would like that to say Mayor Johnson and the clerk to sign the.
Contract.
Contract, thank you.
You're welcome.
And under D and E, those are council appointments, if we could add that verbiage.
Is there support? Oh, second.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Noak?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of close, of regular and closed session, March 4th, 2024.
Mrs. Mayor, I have one correction there. Under the minutes on pay, on the first page, we have one item that was approved by Mayor Protem Johnson. That should be Mayor Johnson as a correction.
Is there a second?
Second.
Danny.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Noak?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Next up is public comment, and citizens appearing before council are on agenda, and non-agenda items shall have, shall be allowed a maximum of five minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during a council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. Please come to the podium and state your name and address. Online comments will be accepted after in-person comments are completed. All comments should be directed to the council and not to the audience. Is there anyone who has public comment?
Good evening. My name is Michael Kramer. I live in Alpena at 226 Fair Avenue. And I'm here to follow up on something that Chris Moses brought to the attention of the council a few sessions ago. And I've talked to a number of residents in town because I'm old and I'm retired, so I can come to these meetings. And they want to follow what you guys are up to. So we are concerned about what the state has mandated in as far as the introduction of illegal aliens to the state. Encouraging people to bring them into their homes is a ridiculous one thing. But I'm posing the question to the council, do you know of any illegal aliens housed in the city? Anywhere? Warming centers? We don't care where they're at. As a veteran, I swore an oath to the Constitution that these people should not be brought into this country and flown into the interior of the nation. So I'm just asking point blank if we know of any houses, warming centers, or anything in the city where these people are housed.
And Mr. Kramer, we normally don't answer questions asked of the public because we don't have the answers at hand. We don't want to give you information that's not correct.
That's okay. If you don't have information, that's all right. I mean, I'm going to the state police and to the sheriff. I want this, it's going to be brought to the fore, and everybody in town that I talk to wants to make sure of that. So I just wanted to ask point blank if that's a problem. Second thing is, do we, can we take a donation up to get microphones for you guys? We love, we come here because we, we don't want to watch TV and we want to hear what you guys have to say. So it's, if it's a small expenditure, the city should put it out, you know. And either that or we'll get Barbie mics and you guys can each have them. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Anyone online, Shannon?
No.
Okay. We have no public hearing. Consent agenda. A, bills to be allowed in the amount of $399,486.49, and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign the warrant. Enter into a contract with Northern Consultants of Hancock, Michigan for grant administrative services for an amount not to exceed $29,680, and authorize Mayor Johnson, Clerk Soick, to sign the contract. C, approval of the cemetery deed number 0296 by and between the City of Alpena and Carolyn and Thomas Lerner in the amount of $1,490 for Block 43, Lot 105 and 106, for the use and purpose of a burial, burial lot with perpetual care, and authorize Mayor Johnson and Clerk Soick to sign the said deed. D is reappointment of City Attorney Bill Pfeifer to the building authority for a three-year term, expiring March 1st, 2027, and that is a council appointment. And E, appoint Jason Luther to the Harbor Advisory Committee for a three-year term, expiring on March 1st, 2027, and that is also a council appointment.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Mayor Protem Noak?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Eight, we have a presentation this evening for retirement recognition of Kevin Alexander from DPW and Steve Schultz from Engineering and Shannon.
Shannon.
DPW will honor us with this presentation.
Yeah, we just, I wanted to, you know, thank Kevin for his service and, and we, we're going to be a while, Kevin. Maybe you want to sit down? We have, we have stories and picks and, oh.
You didn't take it from my list.
No, I just wanted to just introduce Shannon, our DPW division head. She's got a few words to say about Kevin.
On February 12th, 2024, Kevin Alexander retired from the City of Alpena after over 22 years of dedicated service. Kevin began his career in September 4th, 2001, when he was hired as an attendant at the ice rink. Kevin is a valued employee who dedicated to the care of our bike paths in the summer and winter months. He was a regular fixture in our broom, clearing snow during the winter months, dirt debris and geese droppings during the summer months. He's a big part of our downtown Christmas festivities, making sure every year that Santa had a really great spot to stay and making certain that house was ready for him every year. Kevin's knowledge we greatly missed. We already missed the stories about the Big Wheel, the Dango Boots, the jean jackets. But we wish him the best of luck as he fulfills his new full-time career as Papa to all of those grandkids. Kevin, you want to come on up? You want me to read this?
Kevin Alexander, for many years of dedicated service at the City of Alpena, best wishes as you begin this new chapter in your life. Retired with distinguished from the City of Alpena for over 22 years of excellent service on the 12th of February, 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Shannon. Now we're down to report of officers, and this is the sale of city property. Stephen Schultz, Acting City Manager, will present.
I don't have a memo or anything, you know, just for, for council's review was the, the purchase agreement. That's in the, in the packet, and I just kind of wanted to show or illustrate if you scroll just a little bit. So a lot of you remember, we, we spent the better part of five or six years trying to get a, a permit to push a road through the wetlands into the developable part of the US 23 North property. We did that a few years back and generated some, some interest here and there. But this one came along here recently, and Eric is very serious about purchasing this property. This is just between staff and, and him. This drawing is kind of just a, just a figure of what could happen. We are currently talking about either a piece of property on the north side or the south side of the extended road. Just whichever kind of fits the, you know, fits what he needs. And so we would extend the road another 200 feet, the road and utilities as part of this. And part of his price includes his portion of that, those improvements as per our typical cost share with, with homeowner, with property owners. And to our knowledge, there is no other regulated wetlands beyond this point. So all this area that he, that we can access is unregulated wetlands at this point, to our knowledge. There was some wet areas, and Eric did check that out with Eagle, and they kind of, they gave him a letter stating that he could build on the property. So we are free and clear there for now. And I believe the gentleman who visited the site also talked about much of everything to the, to the west or to the east of that is all upland and buildable, he thought, in his estimation. So that's kind of where we're at. Staff is recommending that we approve this, this purchase agreement. This will be the start of, of something out there, we hope. You know, this is, this will be the first property, you know, off this main road. You know, we did have the boathouse property purchased, the, yeah, this is the storage facility that they're working on right now. That's in the, the northern part off of Hamilton Road. But this is that first piece of property off of the main, the main road off of 23. So we're hoping for good things now that we've got two parcels going. So if you have any questions, Eric is here to answer any questions. But the purchase, purchase agreement was pretty, pretty self-explanatory and, and like I say, if you've got any questions, he's here, or if you got anything else you'd like to ask, I guess.
Does anyone have questions?
No, no questions. Questions here? I move that we approve the sale of the city property as presented for the amount stated and authorize Mayor Johnson to sign the purchase agreement.
Second.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Noak?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We look forward.
We're down to Thunder Bay Arts Council informational report and budget request. Tim Kuhnlein, second vice president.
Well, thank you, everyone, for this opportunity to present on behalf of Thunder Bay Arts Council. My name's Tim Kuhnlein. I serve as the second vice president for programming currently. It's been customary over the last several years for me to report back to you each year on our accomplishments regarding the Art Vision Alpena project. And I come to you today with an update on the 2023 sculpture, which was accomplished last fall, and the next project, 2024. So if I could ask you to move, can I do it or do you have to do it? As you all know, the, the sculpture bypass is a product of the bicentennial. For those of you that are not aware, the idea was to populate the bypass with sculptures from, from its origins. Only one sculpture was achieved at the Besser Museum back in 1979. The, the bypass itself was begun in 1976. The planning for it started in 1974. And on the 45th anniversary of the Arts Council, we made it a mission to resurrect the sculptured component of the bypass and to see that through the 2026 Sestres Centennial, which is the 250th anniversary of the declaration as opposed to the bicentennial. And it will be the 50th anniversary of the bypass. So that's really exciting. If I could just have you move forward, please. You can find all this information on our website, the Art Vision Project. It's sort of the newer iteration of the original bikeway, walkway. Can next, please? So you can see here just a snapshot of the sculptures that have been completed, going back to, I'm sorry, I said 1979. It was 1978, the Sculpture Fountain. And you can see jumping through the, the series there, the history of industry piece at the college. That was six sculptures total back in 19, 2018. I'm sorry, teach history, and I'm constantly referring to the wrong dates here. About the 1800s, we're in the night, we're in the 2000s, aren't we? So forgive me if you could move forward, please. So this is where we are right now, moving into the Sestres Centennial. We just finished fishing with Papa, which was a small-scale project, but a very meaningful one nonetheless, focused on intergenerational engagement in community. That was completed at SciTech Park. We had a great unveiling last fall. And so I've got some images here in a moment to show you what that looks like if you haven't seen it already. Incidentally, the plaque for that is completed finally, and it's supposed to be installed this week. So that's the last step of all these projects is putting the plaque on the stand-up. Coming in 2024, we have a sculpture which I want to unveil to you today. I think you're the first publicly to see it outside of the Arts Council. But the focus is health and well-being, giving and service to community. And then moving forward, we're not sure exactly what's going to happen in 2025, but we're going to request of you tonight that we adopt the medallion from the Culligan Plaza Fountain and have it placed on a pedestal at potentially Avery Park so that it's preserved in perpetuity, given the changes that are going down at Culligan Plaza. And then 2026 is the anniversary celebration, and it will be the last sculpture in the series. That will be total of 19 sculptures since we resurrected the idea. And again, this will be the 250th anniversary of the declaration and subsequently the 50th anniversary of the Alpena bypass. So next, please. So here, you saw this last time I was here. This is the making of the sculpture from concept. This is the, the gone fishing sculpture. From conception to construction. And then the next slide shows you, if you would go forward, please. I don't know if you can see it there in the bottom left-hand corner of these, the sculpture. It's a low-profile sculpture with lots of color, and it's tucked in the little wildflower area there up on top of the hill. It's just a kind of a nice fitting tribute to the space, especially given the history of that as a launch point for people going fishing or kayaking. And it was nice to see members of the SciTech family present on that day, and they were related. We were a little worried about concerns intruding in the wildflower space, but we're reassured that that's going to be revitalized. And the SciTech family was in the least bit concerned, so that made us all feel much better. And just incidentally, each one of these sculptures has a very carefully thought-out plaque that lays out the meaning of the sculpture, and some of them are very meaningful. This one is dedicated to Randy Donikowski. His family was instrumental in making it happen, not only conceptually but financially. And this was a low-cost, like the city gave us $1,000 for this, when normally we spend, we ask you for a $5,000 allotment, and each of these sculptures are typically around $25,000 to $45,000 just for the sculpture component. This one was a much more scaled-down version. It was, came out about, about $6,000 for the sculpture itself. It was a $9,000 project. Okay, next slide, please. So now I think the next slide is the unveiling of the new sculpture. If you could just go to the next slide, I don't know why we have that in there. Tom Moran has been selected, and he has agreed to the commission for this health and wellness service and giving. And the, the Art Vision Alpena Committee, the Advisory Committee, and the Thunder Bay Arts Council has vetted this, and I think the next slide reveals it. It's a pretty powerful, powerful piece. This is a much scaled-down version. I think that particular, what's called a maquette, is the size of this podium. The actual sculpture will be 17 feet high on a roughly three-to-five-foot pedestal. And it's made of steel. The hand is steel, and then the emblem in the palm of the hand is made of stainless steel. So obviously, this will be constructed at his site up there in Onaway and transported here. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some different angles. This was on display at the Arts Council for a short period of time when the, the council was evaluating the work. Next slide, there's a, if you can push the little button, there's a, actually, one more slide. There's a little video that does a, so I think you've got to touch it down at the bottom.
It's, it's not the.
It won't work. Okay, so it won't work. All right, and that's fine. So just different angles. If you go to the next slide, you can see a very rough sketch. This was my attempt to demonstrate to him what we wanted, to Tom Moran. He thought it was beautiful, but he thinks it may actually be taller than 17 feet in the end. But that's kind of the scale we're looking for. Currently, we are looking at this to be located at the My Michigan Medical Center between the, the actual hospital and the older building. I don't know what it's called now, right on the corner there. It was the old union, the student union. I think it was the psych ward at one point. You know what I'm talking about? The annex, they call it the annex. There's a little space between those two buildings that has a half arch of trees, beautiful trees. And we're thinking this will probably be located in that general area. We're still working with the hospital. Currently, this project is fully funded, assuming that the city will continue its support. We have the Besser Foundation with their 20% match. The Community Foundation is on board. The My Michigan Health Center is on board. And then the City of Alpena. And we would have this fully, fully paid for without having to go out to the, the general public. We're kind of reserving that, that solicitation because we want to make the Sestres Centennial sculpture a really broad-reaching community effort. And so, and that will probably be a much more expensive sculpture in the end. So we're kind of holding off on that type of public support for that sculpture. This will be, the sculpture alone is commissioned at 30,000. But when you add the foundation and the in-kind contributions, we're probably talking closer to 60,000. So Gary Dowley from the Besser Foundation did research on the initial fountain, the initial sculpture in front of the Besser Museum. And back in the day, I think it was around 50,000, you saw it on the first screen. The equivalent of doing that today would be 150,000 to recreate that same sculpture. So, you know, I think we're being very reasonable in what we, we seek here. We're also relying on really Michigan-based artists, but all but one are from Northeast Michigan. So what we're requesting of the city is a $5,000 allocation, similar to what you've done in past years with the exception of last year. And we can continue to see this through, through the end. To go to the next slide, please. 2025, by the way, that, that 2024 sculpture would be done by fall, if not earlier. The 2025 sculpture, we're going to kind of scale it back again. And we've had our eyes set on that medallion that's at the center of the, the Culligan Fountain for a while. I don't want to lose it, and I'm sure you don't either. And so wherever it ends up getting located, I think it's an opportunity for us to engage a small-scale, low-cost project contributing to the sculpture series, preserving that piece, but for very low cost. So I think the key here is getting it placed on a sort of a very nice foundation so that it gets its due, due respect. Then the next slide, what we're really shooting for and giving us a little bit of a break in 2025 from having to fundraise, it will allow us to use that entire year leading up to July of 2026 for the unveiling of this larger-scale anniversary piece. And you can imagine we have to have the money and all the planning done well before July of 2026. So 2025 will be really critical for us. This is intended to be our last sculpture in this project, and we can kind of say, mission accomplished. What comes of sculptures, just like the murals, other enhancements to the community will be of its own design. You can imagine organizations doing their own thing and contributing to the larger cause, but we have a solid foundation. So we do have some ideas in mind right now about the sculpture. But of course, it would go back to the Advisory Committee and the council as a whole. But we definitely want it to be on the themes of patriotism and reconciliation. We're currently looking at a Native American stone sculptor. He's done a lot of Michigan-based, done a lot of work in Michigan, but it's very expensive. So we'll see. I'd also like to entertain tonight that you all, the city council, think about establishing an anniversary commission for the 50th anniversary of the bypass. The city was instrumental in, along with the Arts Council, in generating the original bypass. And I think it would be far too easy for us to just see that anniversary pass by and not even recognize all the hard work that was involved. Many of the people who were part of that planning were still with us, and some are not. But it might be something for city councils to think about pulling together a commission to help celebrate as a city the establishment of that 50th anniversary, or I'm sorry, that, that's, that bicentennial path, and local school, schoolchildren called it the bypass. That's how it was decided by a vote of schoolchildren. But it would be a wonderful opportunity to, to celebrate. And then, of course, with the unveiling of the last sculpture. We're looking at either the front lawn of City Hall or the front lawn of the county courthouse, the historic county courthouse, as the location of, of that sculpture. So that's all I have for you tonight. Really, just an update on the expenditures from last year. All those receipts have been submitted to the clerk's office, a request of $5,000 for this year's sculpture, and then a consideration of a commission for the 50th anniversary of the bypass.
Maybe we can do a joint, maybe some people from council, some from Art Vision for a 50th anniversary thing? Okay, we'll talk about that.
And it did that with the, the dog park. Yeah, and that worked out really well.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? In terms of, I guess it would be a celebration of the bypass, right?
Yes.
What are, like, having some, say, the courthouse lawn, having a big.
Yeah, something very, I don't know, something very small-town feel where we maybe bring the committee, as many of the committee members who were part of the original bypass project together, and just have a few people share their thoughts, maybe people who have been involved in the expansion of the bypass, because that was really the focus, and it's gone way beyond what they initially imagined. The original bypass was between the college and the museum and the harbor. That was it, along the river. And then, of course, the sculptures were supposed to be added, but they were very expensive, as you can imagine. And they focused their attention on the expansion of the bypass. So that, that's something that could be involved. Yeah, I don't know, really. That's, I think that to, to this commission to decide. But it's a unique thing that we have, to have a sanctuary at the center of a city and a bypass all the way around it, now populated with 20-plus sculptures. And if you've ever seen the handbook on the bypass, there are over 100 installations, like the cannon out front, that have significant historic meaning. There are memorials all along that bypass. They're all detailed in the booklet on the Thunder Bay Arts Council website. But. They're all detailed in the booklet on the Thunder Bay Arts Council website, but it's a lot to celebrate. Not many small towns like this can, can claim that kind of cultural impact.
I've seen lots of photographs of to-dos, I guess you'd call, of Alpena people celebrating its citizens and so forth on the courthouse lawn, I mean, back in the day when they were carrying buses.
Yeah, you can almost imagine a Norman Rockwell-type day. Celebrate, it's the anniversary of the, the declaration, so 4th of July will be a big deal in this country. In fact, coming in here, I just saw a centennial license plate on the front of somebody's big white pickup truck, and it reminded me of when I was little, 1976.
I have a quick question. This is probably more of a question for the Advisory Committee, I assume, but what, what factors went into deciding the location for the 2024?
The 2024, this?
Kind of in between the hospital side and the?
Yeah, that's a very good question, because normally that's, we put these on city property, but this would be the hospital property, which I believe is county property, but it's on the bypass. And really, the determining factor there was the central role that the hospital wanted to play in not only financing this, but making it happen and finding a proper place for it. So we kind of played it a few options, but I don't want to say we're running out of space, but short of congregating them in other locations, we want to make sure they're spread out a little bit, and this kind of ties the, the Black Heron sculpture down by the bridge to the sculptures at the museum, just so, just kind of around the corner.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? We're good?
I don't.
Thank you for your time.
I entertain a motion to receive and file. I would like to move that we receive and file, and what do I add to that? Receive and file the report from Thunder Bay Arts Council, presented by Tim Kuhnlein.
Oh, I'll second it. Mayor Johnson? Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Noak?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Aye.
Anna, I just have one question, so the request for funding will go into the budget discussions?
Yeah.
New business. You beat me up here. Proposed amendment of council policy statement number eight, and that is removal, planting, replacement, and care of public trees. And we have Shannon Smolinski from DPW.
Council policy statement eight is, as Cindy stated, the policy addressing trees within the city right of way and city properties. Recently, this policy was reviewed as part of an ongoing review of all our council policy statements. Much of the red line notes that you see that we corrected were modernization and corrections to this staffing that was mentioned in it. The most notable addition to this policy is the inclusion of a process in which wood left behind by the removal of these trees can be obtained for use by private individuals. We're modeling the system used by the state of Michigan procure, to procurement of wood. Individuals who wish can complete the attached application and have access to the city-designated woodlot and obtain this wood. As per the policy in the past, the adjacent property owner will have the first rights to any wood produced from trees removed adjacent to their property. It's my, my recommended motion is to approve the amended council policy statement eight regarding city-owned trees.
So the motion on the floor would be to approve the amended council policy statement number eight regarding?
Who is the maker?
I think, actually, she read the motion, and I believe Danny actually made the, boo and care of second bit.
Is there any discussion about? Anna?
Councilmember Kane?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Shannon.
Mayor Proton Noak?
Yes.
Councilmember Walchek?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
This is Vanger. I move that we adjourn to closed session to discuss an update on water sewer litigation.
This conference will now be recorded.
During the March 18th, 2024 city council meeting?
Second.
Third.
Thank you.
That's my, used the second, Mitchell was third.